Okay. So it is 6:30. I would like to make a motion to open our meeting.
One second.
How do you vote? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, cool. We'll start with conflicts of interest disclosure. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose?
I do not.
Me neither.
I do not.
I do not.
And I do not as well.
When you were on campaign trail, did you publicly speak about any of these projects? And express strong opinions on any of them?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, very good. So I want to talk about how we're going to run things tonight. I would like to start with Five Austin Park. And I understand that since you were here last month, it was a attenuation, actually just a couple of weeks ago, you went into the Historic Preservation Board and you got some feedback from them and you've incorporated that into your plans. I forwarded a copy of the plans to the board chair and he confirmed that it looks like you're addressing the things that they asked you to address. So that's the background on it. So now that, yeah, well, let me just give a little bit of an introduction here and then maybe come up and we'll go through this. So first of all, I want to take care of Five Austin Park first, we'll get that resolved. Then I'd like to have a session to consult with our attorney. So hopefully that will be about 10 or 15 minutes. And then we will hear Five State Street. So the Five State Street folks, I'm guessing it'll probably be at least half an hour or so before we get to you. So just want to let you know when to expect. Thanks. Okay, well, that said, the other introduction I have is this is a hybrid meeting. People can attend online. This notice is posted on the Village website. Anyone online can request to speak when we get to the public hearing portion of this. And you can click the raise hand button or type a comment if you wish to speak. So with that, let's go ahead and start for Five Austin Park.
As you said, I came before the designer due and they had some comments. And I incorporated pretty much everything that they hoped to see. So we'll start there because that's what got us bumped last time. Whether or not you remember exactly what it was, we had a couple roofs, gable facing roofs over these windows, which they thought was a little modern.
Yeah, one of the things I was wondering.
Some of those gone. Some window alignments. We've got this window aligned underneath this peak, shifted some things around, added some detail to the front columns. The fireplace was a bump out. Currently has one, it's kind of an awkward, but it actually doesn't probably matter. But what it has now is funny. It's got this bump out, but looks like this. So they're used to having that fireplace outside of the room, so that's what they wanted again. Meanwhile, they thought it'd be, if we're going to be outside of the room, let's do a full chimney. So they love that idea, actually. I always tend to think this is going to cost money, this is going to cost. So I try to keep everything because people get this far and then I'm like, okay, it looks great, everyone's happy. And then it's like, oh my God, how much is it? You know, so I just try to think along that line the entire way. Meanwhile, with that said, poured some extra effort in to make the elevations look good. Taken the windows that were double, a mull window and split them so we have trim piece down so it's more in line with the air of the house. So I think I checked all the boxes. I mean, I'm happier with it. It's going to cost them a little more. But with that said, it looks a lot better. I think that they kind of liked it for the most part. I don't know if the meeting notes collected that, but they like the front porch idea. They want to be able to sit out front and enjoy the neighborhood. The porch is real small now.
Well, what's important is that the process works best when you come to the board. You get initial input, you get all the list of changes, you make the changes at once, and then all of the board can.
That makes sense. Now, so I didn't realize, I thought that we were bumped in getting, trying to get design approval. If I even known there was an informational, I could sign up to do an informational thing, that would have been.
Yeah, I think that's a normal process. And I think the building inspector was out of town for a couple of weeks. So I think you kind of fell between the cracks a little bit. So, you know, that's the general process. So I'm sorry you weren't informed of some of that.
That's okay.
But for getting through it wasn't due to any.
My office is just a professional space, so it's not a big hall for me to get in.
Okay.
So with that said, getting to the site plan, it's currently at 29% coverage, which 25 is the max. So it's already over, pre-existing, which a lot of these are. And we'd be asking to go up to 35.
You're asking to go to 35?
Okay.
I think that's in our results.
Just a couple details, we're not going to regrade anything. We're going to keep the exact same grading. We're just going to work with the contours that are there. Everything is, all the gutters are drained to splash blocks. So we're going to follow just what's existing and, you know, stay with that realm for our drainage.
Yeah, we'll get to drainage. I know we asked the building inspector his opinions last time, he wasn't concerned about drainage. Now, is there any, I think we asked you this before, about to ask you again, is there any new light fixtures that you're putting in?
There will be, and I know that there is certain, what is it? It's downlit and it's 60 watt max or something. Those will be.
Okay, yeah, so our code allows, if you have light fixtures, a single bulb that's 75 watts equivalent or less, that's allowed. If you want to do other things, we can look into it. But our main goal is to make sure there's no bright glare. It's not spilling onto the neighbor's property. So the 75 watt bulbs are pretty innocuous, so they don't bother anybody. They only go about 10 or 15 feet. So they're accepted, it's fine. So if you're going to go with that, that we don't give any qualms about that. So.
Other than the garage lights and the light next to the front door, those are the new ones. I think the store, the front door currently has one. I don't think the garage has anything right now. So we'll be adding two, but those will be code compliant.
Okay, so those are the new lights. You're restoring the land sweeping. All right, anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, it's better.
Yeah. So we have a public hearing open, so let's go ahead and see if we have any comments. If anybody in the room would like to submit comments for either the site plan or the variance, please raise your hand. Is there anybody online?
No.
Okay, so anyone online can raise their hand if they'd like to speak. So there are people online, but they're not raising their hand, is that what you're saying? Okay. All right, then I will make a motion to close both public hearings.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So let's go through and let's talk about the variance first. And we had a resolution, so I think we are done with questions for you.
All right.
What we're going to do at this time is we're just going to deliberate on some of our findings. We have the five criteria we're required to consider for variances. And so we're going to discuss that amongst ourselves and get to a decision. So.
Okay, so I'll listen from the back room.
Yeah, you can listen from whatever chair is most comfortable.
Thank you, guys.
Let's see which variance. So Jared, we basically get these things and fill in the blanks. Okay. So. Let's go to the second page here, the first item. The requested variance will or will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Any comments from anybody?
I would say does not create an undesirable change.
Okay. I guess I can add a note here that they went before the Architectural Review Board and incorporated their changes that were requested. And in my opinion, everything about this seems pretty consistent with neighborhood character on the street.
I think basically it's an improved property. And so I also am of the opinion it will not create an undesirable change.
And we've also heard from the building inspector on drainage as well, that it's not going to cause problems nor is lighting going to cause problems. We good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next one, whether the benefits sought by the applicants can be achieved by some other feasible method. Thoughts, anyone? I would say tonight.
I would agree.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So we usually say they can't receive the benefit desired, which is building this without building this.
I've always loved.
It goes in circles, sort of, yeah. No way I ever can make a house bigger than to actually make it bigger.
Okay, the next one, the impervious surface is going from 29% to 35%. I personally don't think that's substantial.
I agree, and it's already non-conforming.
It's already non-conforming. And we know that many, many, many properties are much higher than 35% in the village, even for residential. For D, are we good with just copying our statements from A? Okay, so it will not have an adverse impact, whatever was said for A can continue. And E, we usually say it is self-created, but this alone does not exclude granting of variance. And whether it's the minimum necessary to provide relief. I guess I would certainly say that a slight reduction or a slight change in block coverage is not going to make any impact. Not going to change the impact. And.
Right, agree.
And also they can't get the benefit of this without building this. And as far as the other things go, I don't think, I can't really think of anything for GRH, any opinions? So I will make a motion to approve the area variance for watt coverage.
I will second it.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Aye? Okay.
Just make a change here.
Oh, yeah, we got it. These all look the same pretty much every time, by the way. Okay, next one we have is the site plan. Here we had our draft resolution on that. You were jotting down notes as we go, right?
I am.
Excellent.
Do you have a question?
No.
And here to kind of maybe save us some time, I copied one that we did about six months ago for on 87 South Main Street for a site plan. So we can kind of glance through some of the findings on that and we can just copy what makes sense.
Your own is still.
Well, I'm sorry, I can advance, I'm not always good at that, but anyway, we can get through it pretty quickly. Okay, so first of all, we've heard from the building inspector and they have applied for all variances they need and it doesn't create any other code compliance issues, so that's number one. Number two, I suggest we just keep this. Number three, number four, traffic and pedestrian access is not applicable. Five, keep the answer, still residential family home. Six, the driveway is not being modified at all, is it? Are you here?
Oh.
I didn't see any modifications to the driveway.
I don't think any are, okay. So then we can keep this answer, no changes. Number seven, again, it's landscape, no changes. Eight, signage, not applicable. Nine, I believe this answer is the same. It complies with code and no brighter than 75 watt bulbs are used.
Right.
Ten, the, I think we could just say for 10, the building inspector has reviewed drainage and had no concerns. And then sewers, trash, and snow removal, not applicable. And the others, we had no concerns, the fire marshal had no concerns. Okay, any other comments from anybody?
No.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the site plan.
I'll second it.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right, well, that one is all set.
I think that was a land speed worker.
I'm trying to get.
Very, very efficient.
I've heard that, trying to do, trying to make some efforts to filter things quicker.
Yeah, no problem.
We'll keep working at it.
Yes. And you're going to take Mike off and put Jared on?
Yes, I already.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will make a motion to enter attorney-client sessions and to consult with our attorney. And people, you can stay in the room. We're going to go next door, into another room.
I'll second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a, we can make a motion to return to our regular meeting.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. I apologize for the delay, everybody. We wanted to discuss some things that just came in this afternoon. Otherwise, we would have tried to take care of this well before the meeting. Anyway, I want to welcome the applicant back. And we would very much like to hear, focus on your changes that you've made to the plan from the last time. And we'd like to hear about it, we'd like to hear about the trash situation, which was the main thing that was being held over. And I'll just turn it over to you.
That's great. Good evening, boards, good to see you all again. Ryan Kelly, RPK Menace, Kappa Architecture. I'm here on behalf of Chuck Mancini, he's not present in person, but he is joining us on Zoom. He's actually in Spain, but I wanted to thank you all for approving the variances the last time we connected. I'm here to present the revised site plan. And really, our outcome is really for our site plan improvement tonight. So as far as site plan modifications, from the last time we connected, we have revised the east, the northeast corner of the building. We've removed our bike washing station and really all improvements within the shared parking area to the east side of the building. And that's about 160 square foot reduction in scope. So our limited disturbance has been peeled back to the corner of the building.
Quick question about that, you have the striped area there marked, no parking. Is that what you've discussed with the building inspector to make sure that exit door that's in that location is accommodated?
That's correct. We also spoke with the board trustees and really having a well-thought-out plan for emergency access. That is our emergency door and that is complying with the standards for striking.
Okay.
Any questions on the site plan modifications? I'll jump into the next topic.
And the other thing with the railing height, you did lower that, correct?
Say it one more time.
The railing height, that was another thing we discussed last time.
Rally height was conforming, so that's a 30, that's a minimum compliance for ADA. So we, I think, I believe we left that was 36 inch minimum. Everyone was okay with that. We did not like railing height in our comments.
Okay.
But really, I think the main topic was the trash removal, or as Chuck would say, the rubbish removal plan as part of your comments from the last time we spoke. And then really two options were laid out to obtain consent from Village Bakery to use the shared dumpster area on the Village Bakery property, or come up with a Plan B for rubbish disposal. Our client has actually decided for option C and to rely on the 32-year-old easement between Reynolds 5 State Street property and Village Bakery, which has been exercised by Empire Paint, Starbucks, and Rachel's on businesses that have operated with approval from the village using the shared dumpster easement. And Mike Reynolds, who's representative owner's side, is here present tonight that can answer any questions related to easement.
Okay, so I believe what I've heard is we asked you to come back and either get permission from the property owner or a different file you've come before us with, neither, is that correct?
Not entirely correct. We proposed a trash enclosure area within the shared parking space and, excuse me, presented that to the board of trustees. That was not well received. So we've looked at all options, in our opinion, and we come back to you with an easement that has worked well for almost three generations.
Okay, so there, we have, I'm wondering about what was going on with that area. I've heard it could be some totes there and some fence around it.
We vetted that out several different ways and there's just D not feasible and not recommended by the board trustees.
Yeah, the issue on this end is if this board doesn't get involved in private property disputes, as we talked about last time. So, you know, my recommendation to them would be to limit any approvals of the site plan to activities that are solely within lands that are owned in the simple by the property owner of the applicant.
I mean, so Mike Reynolds from the ownership of the property, our request is for consistency for past approvals. Rachel's used this deed as part of their approval just in 2018. Starbucks used it in 1997. Wondering why our tenant would have to do something different than use something that's been used previously.
It wasn't clear from the records and proof reviewed that were provided to this board what the form of approval was that was presented to the boards previously in connection with the paint store and Starbucks and Rachel's. The minutes refer to a trash agreement, but it doesn't refer to a recorded deed. It's not clear what agreement is being referred to. And if there, if the prior approvals were based upon a prior trash agreement and there is no trash agreement here, then my recommendation to the board still would be that they cannot approve a site plan that requires activity on property not longer controlled by the applicant.
So confirm with Rachel's that they did present the deed as, now, not on the minutes from 2018, since trash agreement. That was, the deed for 1990 was presented and accepted by the board.
And I don't have any reason to disagree with you, but the minutes also do not show any objection by the adjacent property owner to the location or the use of the dumpster on the Village Bakery property by the other tenants.
So I have a quick question. Did removing the fencing in the bike box station resolve the conflict with the bakery? And are they agreeing to let you use the dumpster or is that still contested?
That was less to do with the bakery. I think that was more to do with the shared ADA spot that was recommended by the board trustees to abandon it. So again, that's where we're getting mixed opinions on what we're dealing with, with neighboring disputes. This board is not involved in that, but the board trustees is. And so we have two easements that we're essentially now meeting. We proposed improvements within an ADA, a non-conforming ADA space that was sufficient enough for this operation, for trash improvements, trash operational planning, but that was not well received. So this is what we're coming back with.
When you guys were here earlier this, I'm sorry. I don't want to speak out of turn. When you guys were here earlier this month, there was some talk about not needing very much trash management because of the use of, you know, ceramic dishware and employees might be able to take trash home and other options. Are those options no longer being considered by the applicant?
Well, they just, this is the direction he'd like to proceed.
He's on the line, so he may want to speak to it, but.
Okay, well.
I think in essence, 32 years of using this easement, it's never required approval. And just adds asking for consistency along those lines. Going above and beyond giving an adjacent property the right to object to any tenant that you would bring in the future based on this, when it's been used for 32 years is.
Right, in that case, I would.
Also something we have issues with.
I'm sorry. I need some.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, I think that your dispute is with the adjacent property owner though, not with the, not with the planning board.
Can I allow Mr. Mancini to talk when you're?
Yeah.
Maybe what we should do is we've heard their proposal, let's open the public hearing, whatever comments you want to come in. I don't know if the bakery property owner, if someone on the line would like to speak. Let's let people speak for now. So we have the public hearing open for site plans. So let's go ahead and see comments. First of all, does anyone in the room want to start with comments?
Sure, I would.
Go ahead, please, and just please stand up, state your name. And if you have some comments, I would love to.
I'm Charlie Fitzsimmons, I'm the owner of the Village Bakery. I own the building in Five State Street. I own JoJo's down the street and I own a little office across, across the way. First of all, I appreciate this delicate dance you all have to do here. And, you know, there were a couple of things I came prepared to speak to. One, I know your decision has already been drafted to waive parking requirements for the proposed use next door, which I strongly disagree with. Having operated in that location for 12 years and understanding all the challenges we've had with those cars and how myself and.
Hold on a second, if I can pause you just a moment, I want to ask our attorney. This is already a decided topic.
Right.
And the public hearing has already been closed on that variance. They had every opportunity to present stuff to us at the public hearing. Should we be accepting testimony now?
There's really, it's not really proper for us here to public comment on a closed matter at this point.
Okay. What are we commenting on?
The site plan approval.
Oh, okay. Which is a layout of generally under the site.
Yeah, so. Aside from my legal interpretation, and I know there's multiple lawyers here, of the deed, I would like to speak to a little bit about the practice of the deed and what we've been doing as neighbors with Mike since I bought the building. And that is that I would allow any tenant that Mike Reynolds had to use our dumpster. And there was quite a lot of garbage dragged across the parking lot, thrown up over the side. We'd have to clean it. We'd have to repair the damaged dumpster by the trucks. We'd have to manage and maintain critter. We'd have to do everything for it. And in lieu of that, what I would get is access to an approved used handicap spot. And it was out in front of Starbucks, we have multiple pictures of it. And while I always felt I kind of had the short end of the stick on the deed agreement, we honored it because we understood that it was legal. And quite frankly, it was a neighborly thing to do. It had been done, they needed a dumpster, I needed parking. And we had one parking spot on our approved site plan, one handicap parking spot approved on our site plan. But the additional handicap parking spot was great. We used it because it was very difficult for handicap people to park in the lot across the street and get over to, come to the, our bakery, Baker Cafe. So my mom would use it, quite frankly. My manager here, Christine, who was kind enough, was going to speak a little bit to the parking issues we have, but more or less, I'm speaking to the deed agreement that we have been doing. So having a site plan approved and a parking variance waived when one of the spots is ours, we've been using it, just doesn't seem quite fair. But again, that's just my, my opinion that something that has been practiced and shared and demonstrated, and all of a sudden, because they have a third tenant in the time period of owning the building, come through and wants to wipe out all the parking, suddenly, you know, why? I don't know what they're talking about, you know? I'll treat the deed any way I want. And I think that's pretty disingenuous. I don't think it's neighborly, I don't think it's right. So that's what I'm speaking to, as far as the site plan. Yeah.
Okay, so just a quick question for you. They have removed their fencing and all other developments in this area?
I haven't seen anything, just a.
Okay, so I, I mean, when I saw these plans, I was like, great, hopefully they've resolved all these debates. But my understanding is everything in that area is being left as it is, asphalt. They're not putting anything there.
Where is the handicap spot that our guest used?
Your handicap spot is on your property, there's two spots, right?
But the handicapped property spot that was approved, and we have multiple pictures of it.
Was used.
No, I'm sorry.
Here.
There's a discrepancy of what he believes is the shared handicap spot and what is historically the shared handicap spot, both under the 1990 agreement and the 97 Starbucks site plan. So we, we did pass along the 97 site plan that shows shared handicap spot of the 16 by 590 space. So I'll give you a little, little backdrop. So in 1990, this was one parking area. There was no sidewalk, there was no bollards, there was nothing separating it. Our family bought the property, and in order to be ADA compliant at that time, this area, the 16 by 20 area, was a part of our ownership and our deed in 1990. Now, customers coming in this way could park there. Customers coming in this way could park there because we shared with, at the time, an auto body shop and Empire Paint. And in 97, when Starbucks submitted its site plan, again, no sidewalk existed, no bollards existed here, they actually submitted their site plan and designated that as shared handicap. And they even showed a turning radius and turning plans with that space as a shared handicap space. Fast forward to 2011, the sidewalk was approved to put in. Going through that 16 by 20 space, bollards were put up to separate the parking areas and completely changed the 16 by 20. Now, what we have requested of our tenant and have been advised by the village trustees is that we will honor the 1990 deed and that this will remain untouched because it was meant to be a shared handicap space at the time. At no point in time has our family ever, or.
We'll get, we'll get to.
We've never consented to any, the handicap spot that was over here was also a part of the Starbucks site plan, not shared. There's a shared handicap space and there's a handicap space. This handicap space was ADA compliant for them in 97 in order to have, be the closest to the entrance. This space is for either property, not ADA compliant. For one, because of the sidewalk going through it now. And two, because it's not the closest location to either main entrance.
And it blocks the fire exit.
But previously, a car could pull up here and park there and have the outside access to have the ADA if it wasn't covering that door. A sidewalk and bollards completely changed that. So we've been on record disputing the 16 by 20 with the village in the past. Have not taken legal recourse, we've just kind of gone by. We're willing to leave this space completely untouched to honor that 1990 agreement with expectation that we use the garbage easement as we have over the past 30 years, or 10 years ago. Do, and you, you have a copy of this we sent to you?
Yes, and the board has it also.
Okay.
Okay, now, just for understanding this, first of all, the entirety of this is on the Cycle Cafe property.
This 16 by 20 is.
And the proposal is to leave it vacant, which is what it is now.
Correct.
And a car could park there. They could physically park there if they wanted to. Whether it's legal or not, that's a whole nother matter. But a car could park there, and I'm sure people informally park all over the place. But also my understanding is the building inspector has decided this is not meet legal requirements for a parking spot. Is my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but, okay.
That was, that was his determination. Well, I, yeah.
No, I was just gonna say, we said we let Charlie.
Yes.
No, I think, look, the reason why I went to an attorney is there's so many interpretations of what the deed says. And again, I go back to, that wasn't the handicap spot. It hasn't been the handicap spot. That's the fire exit. Bob Corby, Mr. Corby would not let any tenant go into that space without a handicap accessible spot. And putting it where they're saying it is was blocking their fire exit. So it didn't exist.
Sorry.
So they moved, let me finish, please, please. They moved the handicap spot over adjacent to the Phoenix Building. That was the handicap spot. We have photos of it. There's no photos of any handicap parking spot where Mike Reynolds is insinuating it is. It was never used, it's never been since I've been there. It's always been the handicap spot on that side. That's what our people use, that's what I honored, that's why I let them put garbage in our, in our spot.
Okay, so you're, I'm getting a little confused here. You're referring to two different spots, is what it sounds like?
Yeah, so since I've owned the building, the handicap spot that was approved was here. I don't, I, wherever the handicap approved spot is, where you can park, and it's an approved handicap.
I'm sorry, by here you're referring to, like, some of the, the west side of the property, the Cycle Cafe property, a half way between the north and south property lot. Is that what you're saying?
Here, you can look at the next sentence, like, from Starbucks.
I remember. Yeah, right.
Do you have a note from the, you said, parking spots, the parking spots? This is the approved parking spot. This was not approved, it was never approved. As a matter of fact, your father would come up, people had a quick sign.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this can't really devolve into a debate between the two property owners. It's really a time for public comment to the board, if you don't mind.
These are a host of pictures of all the handicap spot that has been. The only handicap spot on record.
So it sounds like nobody disputes that there was a handicap spot there. They disputed whether that was the shared spot that the agreement referred to?
Yeah, because the agreement doesn't specify a location on the deed. It says access to a shared handicap spot.
Okay.
So.
So you're saying.
And then I'll let him use the garbage.
Okay, so I also thought it was just that one area there, all right, thank you.
Is there any, is there any written agreement, or is this like a handshake agreement?
This is the 1990, when we separated the front parcel. There were three easements, water, garbage.
Got it.
Parking. So I just want to.
I'm sorry, are you finished speaking?
Yeah, I, I, you know, anything beyond, it's more legal stuff, and I don't want to pretend I don't know.
Okay, just one quick question. So with the removal of the fence and everything by the side door, does that resolve your debates, or do they still persist?
No, that doesn't.
Okay.
Because he's saying the shared parking is over here, not over there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a handicap.
I also still have Chuck Mancini.
Okay, well, we have a public hearing. Thank you, both of you, for preventing this, we're listening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's. What should we talk about? Okay, let's both.
Chuck is on the line, so if you want to hear, come in with an applicant.
Yeah, let's go ahead and hear from him, and then we'll open it up to other members of the public. Thank you.
Mr. Mancini, can you hear us?
I can, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
So I greatly appreciate the, the board's interest in, in this matter. I would observe that one of the things that I have not heard tonight is any dispute relative to a valid trash easement. It's, it's clear, there's, there's a filed deed with the county for the last 32 years that there is a valid shared trash easement. Now, we just heard Mr. Fitzsimmons raise some concerns about handicap parking or ADA parking. He's, of course, raising those concerns in the interest of, of killing this project, which I would remind the committee is completely consistent with the 2019 comprehensive plan of the village, which is to foster increased cycling, foster increased pedestrian access, to foster more open space. This, this project is exactly what the village is seeking, and, and he wants to kill it. So, so he's, he's raising all kinds of straw men. The board asked us about trash. And, and what we've said tonight is we're going to run a restaurant. This is, this is a, is a cafe, it does have trash. Now granted, it's going to be less trash than other restaurants, but we still need trash. And we can't be, you know, putting it into employees' cars at the end of the day to drive to some third location, no. The reason I picked this location as, 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 as the place for when to make a significant investment that's going to enhance the overall village is because it's been used as a restaurant, it's been used as a cafe for many years. I mean, Starbucks operated here and used this shared, shared dumpster easement. So it's my expectation to run this cafe using the shared dumpster easement. And as, as, you know, we just heard, there's no dispute over that shared dumpster easement. And that was the one thing that this board asked me to come back with. We've been working, I've been working with the owner of the building, Mike Reynolds, who's, who's present here, representing his parents. And he's, he's pointed out, this is a valid trash easement. There's no dispute, Charlie does not even disputing it. So you asked us to solve the trash problem, we've solved it. We have a valid easement, the same one that Starbucks and Rachel's has used.
So there are other people who want to make public comments now?
So is anyone, are there any other people in the room who would like to make a comment?
I sent an email about the set plan conformance with the comprehensive plan. And is that, is that, will that email suffice, or should I, you need it now?
Can we, I mean, he is an alternate member of the board, he's totally.
He's not serving.
He's not serving tonight.
Right.
But he served last week. Last week.
Well, then he won't be able to participate in any deliberations.
So we should treat it as a public comment.
As a public comment, sure.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, by all means, if you want to, go ahead and, it'll be, if we can just like, make a statement?
Sure, especially if the board hasn't had a chance to review his email.
Yeah, I mean, if anything came in today that was worried around, there is.
Yeah.
But there is, like, this much stuff that's been in today.
I saw the email, but it might be useful just for everybody to hear.
Yeah, if you could just give a summary of your, your key points.
Yeah, sure. The, the site plan approval calls, one of the first requirements is, is that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan says, says that the village will reduce its carbon footprint. And the electric snowmelt thing takes a surprising amount of electricity. It takes as much as 104 houses. And it's, and it doesn't seem to be necessary because people wouldn't sit on the side of, people wouldn't sit on the terrace when it's freezing cold anyway. So that's, I would hope that this, this system wouldn't even be installed. Or if it is installed, I think that the owner would soon find that it's not necessary because nobody sits outside in the freezing cold anyway.
Yeah, I would certainly think if they found a way to save money by turning it off when it's not needed, then that kind of logically makes sense, doesn't it? But anyway, we'll, we'll consider the comments, thank you. So. Is there anyone else looking to make comments?
Did you mean online?
Yeah, well, if you go online, if you're in the room or online. So if anyone else online would like to make a comment?
I'm a Marathon engineer.
Please, please, click your raise hand button.
They have it up.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, everybody, Matt, this is Matt Tomlinson from Marathon. I, I heard a question come up, and I, I don't want to chime in more than the board has already heard relative to this easement. But there was a question as to whether or not the garbage and, and other agreements between the properties was a handshake or reserved. And I know that the deed was submitted, but I just wanted to read the section related to the garbage to the board direct out of the title report or deed. And it says, there is also conveyed to the grantee, meaning the Cycle Cafe or Rachel's property, an easement across lands being retained by the seller, thus the Village Bakery property, so as to allow the grantee to use a trash dumpster located on lands retained by the seller. So it's very specific in the deed that that is reserved to it. I know there was some comment related to interpretation, but that's as, as clear as it can be as far as from a filed deed with reserved rights to the property. So yes, there's been collaboration between the owners over time, but it is not a, just a handshake or a verbal agreement. It is specifically noted there.
All right.
I want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Didn't Rachel's have patio seating out front?
That, they had that temporarily, yes.
Just during COVID, right?
Yeah, that was, that was a temporary COVID measure where people were allowed to park on sidewalks, streets, alleys, or in that part. Put tables, all kinds of places to keep places open. Got some interesting pictures from various cities. But anyway, the law is allowing the temporary outdoor seating under COVID times have expired. All right, we unfortunately don't have the building inspector here. What to do with the trash situation? I think the, I mean, the opinion before was, was to get an agreement with, between the properties or get another option. So it's sounding like, yes, there's a deed in place, but there is a debate between the property owners still that's unresolved. I'm not excited about getting involved in the debate between the property owners. As far as I'm concerned, if either one of those is reached, I'm fine. If I either get a, reach an agreement, or if there are an alternative plan. I'm just not sure, either of those before us.
I would agree with that. I, I wonder if perhaps, and not to delay this any further, another attorney-client sidebar might be appropriate. another attorney-client sidebar might be appropriate at this point.
I was going to suggest the same.
Okay. Um, all right, before we go, is there any other comments that any part, either the parties would like to make?
Next quick question.
Go ahead.
Uh, my name's Carter. We're sitting here in Pittsburgh. Um, you mentioned before that the parking variance was closed. Is the resolution signed for that variance?
Uh, no, it has not been signed yet. It has not been, uh, we had a draft of it. And that's our traditional ones. If you want to grab a copy of one of these, they're fill in the blank. So we talked about the, um, uh, we talked about all of our findings, but they, it does not exist in written form, signed form. And the board hasn't voted to the final form of it yet.
But the board did.
We did grant it and we discussed all the findings. It's just not in its final written form yet. Uh, we usually, uh, when we adopt a meeting minutes, we usually adopt the final form of all of our resolutions, uh, part of the meeting minutes. Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn to an attorney-client session.
Second.
Do you vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, return to our meeting.
Second.
Do you vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, so we still have the public comment session open. Um, you, you had a request to provide another comment.
I'd like to comment. I, I'd like to ask for the board or ask, uh, the village bakery if they're saying that they're going to deny the garbage easement and their access to use the garbage. Because I haven't heard them say that they're going to deny it tonight.
Um, I, I, I'm still of the opinion that the dispute between you two, you two need to resolve somehow or another. I'm, uh.
Could you not ask for his approval here?
I, I don't think that would have any weight bearing on.
I mean, normally if, uh, if we were to ask for his approval, it'd be in writing and signed. Um, I think that's what we had asked for before, if we can sign an agreement between the two parties or come up with a plan B. So, I think this is the only, uh, the, the trash situation, that's the only issue left. Is that correct? Okay. Um, all right, is there any other comments from anybody? Um, okay, so let me find a copy of, um.
You want to close the public here?
Yeah, let's go and close the public here. That's good. If they pass around their draft of this as well. Um, while passing this around, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing on the site plan.
Second.
Okay, and if Mr. Fitzsimmons or any of the other parties, you want to see a draft of this, most of this is. Is this the right one? No, this is the wrong one. I was gonna say.
Oh, yeah.
There's a site plan up there.
Yeah. Here, well, you can have a copy of that, just so you see what we're talking about. We're talking about it in the meeting. It's still fill in the blank. We haven't discussed any details yet.
So everyone voted aye? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, yes, aye.
Okay, so here's, pop this around. Those people, we have enough copies of it.
Do you want to make another one?
Yeah.
Also, Gavin, do you mind if I?
Okay, we can share.
Y'all share.
Share Susan, I can share. Okay, um, so here's the suggestion I have to resolve this. Okay, we just place a, um, condition of approval, to have the building inspector approve a trash management plan. Could be the dumpster, could be something else. Um, that's my thought. I'm not particularly concerned about what the solution is as long as there is one. And obviously, no business wants to operate without a trash removal service. So, and then another condition of approval I'm going to suggest that the boards consider is, um, that we, uh, place the condition that, uh, any improvements that are made to the DOT right-of-way portion of the project, receive written consent, uh, before the work is done if required.
From the DOT.
From the DOT, correct. And, um, let's see, and then we had the third one, um, that we talked about, and I already forgot.
I have it. A, um, special permit from the trustees.
Yeah, well, I think that's already in here. They obtained a special permit from the trustees. The other conditions that are listed in here are historic preservation board shall grant a certificate of appropriateness. The board trustees will grant a special permit. Um, the site plan approval will expire if, um, a building permit is not obtained within a year. And, um, um, there's also a condition in here that states that, um, the applicant is, um, able to change the seating arrangement. And, um, as long as the total capacity doesn't, um, doesn't expand beyond what the board of trustees authorizes. Um, and then there's a fifth one, that all exterior light fixtures, um, shall be standard soft white in color, which is 2,700 to 3,000 Kelvin, which is what you guys have always talked about, just standard incandescent light colors. Um, and did you guys get a copy of this at all to take a look at? I think we'll get a copy of it.
Now we know.
We haven't gone over that yet. We will.
These conditions would be if the board were to approve the site plan.
Correct. These conditions would be if the board were to approve the site plan.
Am I allowed to make a comment on the DOT piece?
Sure. Actually, we didn't ask you about that, so by all means, go ahead.
Are we gonna, do we have to reopen for public comment?
I don't, uh, he's the applicant.
Oh, true, true. So is part of our.
This is a different topic. I handed it to him.
So as part of our original response, I mean, the DOT has seen our plans. And so I just ask that, that comment is if required by the DOT, we will.
That's exactly what we're hoping. So if required and they give you whatever they need, whether it's a permit, permission.
Exactly.
Or a state.
Email, I love it. Whatever is, whatever is deemed required.
We're in dialogue and we're obviously working closely with the building enforcement.
Yeah.
To our knowledge, there's, that is a non-issue at this point in time.
Okay, and just one quick question. Where, in your opinion, does that right-of-way start?
So, have you conferred with the, so the village just as of today, uh, with the work that DOT is doing out here, the DOT has set what they consider a very firm easement, uh, right-of-way plan. And I can show you what it says, we can provide it to you, but, um, so here's four corners. Phoenix Building Property, uh, the right-of-way actually comes up and does not cross the Phoenix Building. It comes up our property on the sidewalk and then cuts across here going down across.
Okay, so that there's line that's on here is still where you believe.
This highway, yeah. And the village has said that they don't own the land. They are not going to do anything and we're required to get DOT approval, uh, which is progress.
Okay.
To my understanding, from our attorneys, I mean, you can.
Okay, and this proposed condition here would be just that if it's required, you will get it for work only on that portion of.
And I was gonna ask if the interior could still be done or.
Yeah, I, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, um, we're only concerned about construction there as needed for. And yes, the rest of it, uh, the wording of that would not be to preclude, um, building the rest of it.
100-year-old, uh, mapping issue, uh, now coming back.
Oh, I, my property has that too.
It's really.
I don't know where my property line is. So, uh, okay, um, so we, we had those five, um, conditions written on there. Then the other two is the DOT and, uh, the trash plan approved by the, the building inspector.
I'd like to see if Chuck has anything to say about it.
Wait, this is, this isn't a debate. This is a board deliberation right now.
And, um, and the comment is if you reach an arrangement with the other property owner, it seems that would satisfy that condition. And if you make another arrangement, that would also satisfy that condition. So, um, that's, that's how I see it.
Can I ask?
In the, in the event that the board votes to grant site plan approval.
Yes, that's correct. In the event, we, we haven't voted to approve anything yet.
Is that in order to, that plan is to be in place before starting construction or before operating the garbage removal plan needs to be in place?
I think that's up to the building inspector.
You need to take that up with the building inspector?
Okay.
And right now, the board is gonna do its deliberations on the, um, site plan application, so there won't be any further public comment.
Okay, yeah, clear.
Okay. Thank you. And now we gave out all of our copies of this, but here I have another one.
We're sorry. Well, we gotta go back.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so the first topic on here was zoning compliance. And, uh, so the applicant has applied for required variances for the zoning code. Um, that's the first one. Um, the next one, um, regarding compliance with the comprehensive plan and LWRP. Um, anyone want to take a stab at comments on it? I know we, we heard some that, uh, it's going to encourage pedestrian use, encourage bicycle use.
Open space.
It's gonna create. Creator of open space, create a, a destination in the center of our village. All of these are things mentioned in the comprehensive plan. Do you have any other? I know you were on that, do you have any other thoughts? Okay, there is a comment on, um, carbon footprint. The amount of power a customer, a person uses in their own house, um, I don't see how that's of our concern. I would suspect that reducing carbon footprint would be for the village itself and its infrastructure. If that's in the comp plan, but. And anyone have any comments on the power situation?
No. Yeah, I don't think it has any impact.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I think the amount of electricity usage is their own business personally. And they're most likely going to, uh, turn it off if it's not needed.
Right, it's probably be minimally used.
Okay, so we agree to, um, okay, no, so there's no comments whatsoever about the electricity usage in the findings. Not used. Okay, um, as you can see, an arrangement of vehicular traffic and circulation. Um, there will be no vehicular traffic and circulation. Um, pedestrian access is improved. And, um, and safety is improved by the lack of vehicular traffic and circulation.
And bicycle traffic is.
Yes, bicycle traffic is encouraged, correct. Uh, next one, compatibility of proposed uses to adjacent uses. They're both restaurants. Any other thoughts from anybody?
No, and there has a continuation of things.
That is a continuation. You've said both are restaurants for a significant period of time. Um, and I would also say that, um, adequate screening is being built from, uh, to screen the, the seating area from the traffic, parking of the adjacent properties. Adequacy of off-street parking, loading and access. Um, we've said.
The availability of the public parking across, immediately across the street, both on the street and behind the library.
Yes, there is public parking lot across the street. Um, there's also on-street parking. And lots of other properties, um, nearby this have no parking at all, including restaurant use.
And the expected parking needs are diminished because it's a cycle cafe and expected that many of the patrons will be coming by bicycle and not car.
Okay, so yes, they're encouraging patrons to, or by bicycle. Okay. Landscaping and screening, um, we've said screening is adequately provided with the, um, fencing and walls. Um, landscaping, we've talked about before. They, um, did careful consideration on their landscaping to avoid blocking views of pedestrians walking on the sidewalk while still making the property attractive. Um, incorporated a tree that was compatible with the, um, conditions on the site. Um, I've no, I thought the landscaping plan was good. Any, any other thoughts?
Agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, signage. Um, I didn't have any concerns about the proposed signage. Um, it's only conditioned on HPPB approval, so, um, the sign is in the location of the existing one. Um, I don't see any concerns about the signage.
So it's consistent with prior.
So, yeah, signage is consistent with prior usage. Um, outdoor lighting, um, adequacy of it. Um, I thought their lighting plan was well-designed to be low-intensity and close to the ground, so it gets light on the ground for safety without producing glare. And, uh, the one thing I had, I was concerned slightly about was, uh, the light fixtures on their pillars. Um, they have like four bulbs in there. It was unclear how bright those would be. Um, what I'm thinking is maybe we just put a condition, um, proposed condition of approval on here that the building inspector can, um, accept, uh, their lighting arrangements for those fixtures. They can put brighter bulbs or dimmer bulbs. Does that make sense?
Just as long as it's approved by.
Okay, do, do you have any concerns about that? Is that, I mean.
No, that's reasonable.
We just don't want it to be too bright, but I think that's your intent.
That makes sense.
So if we have the building inspector to sign off, uh, the, the final lighting, okay.
Just the, the, the intensity.
The intensity of why.
Not the design of it.
So it's too complicated to, like, um, I guess review that, um, at the stage of the design, but. Okay, uh, so that's signage. Uh, now we have, uh, drainage. Um, they presented a drainage plan. The building inspector thought it was good. They're using an existing storm drain and directing all their water to it. So I don't have any further concerns.
Yeah.
Um, water in sanitary sewers, I believe, are unchanged. Is that correct, guys? No changes to water or sanitary sewers? Okay, so that's not applicable. Adequacy of waste and trash management plans. It's basically a condition of approval.
Right.
Adequacy of snow removal plans. They proposed a heated patio to remove snow. And whether it'll affect, adversely affect health, safety and general welfare, uh, of the community. I don't have any further concerns. And I believe the fire marshal stated they had no concerns. Okay, I'm not, I'm not writing this all down, so you're gonna have some fun.
I am. Not fun, I'm writing it down.
Can you write it down? Okay. Okay, um, so I will make a motion, um, to approve this, noting that we had seven conditions of approval and we added an eighth, that the building inspector shall approve the bulb selection for the, the lights on the, uh, the two, uh, lights on the pillars. Have we?
Yeah, you're just on the two front pillars.
Okay. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
How do we vote? Aye.
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 Okay. So we approve the site plan. Um, thank you, guys, for. So we approved the site plan, thank you guys very much for the detailed drawings, all the excellent design work you did. You really put a lot of thought into this, and I think everyone in the village is looking forward to having a nice new pedestrian-friendly destination. So thank you for all of the work and vision that went into this. Next thing for the board is we need to get the resolutions written up and resolved. And so they're in their final written form. And so are we gonna do that, some type of special meeting? I think that would make sense. I don't know what people's availability is, though.
I didn't mean to say I wasn't having any fun. I was just responding to you.
No, I mean, sometimes I take notes on that, but it takes forever. And, and, but it also saves us from having to go back and listen to tape for hours.
Yeah, well, I always go back through anyway.
Okay.
Should we close the meeting?
We close, did we close the public hearing?
Did you close, you closed the public hearing, but I don't think you adjourned the meeting.
We haven't adjourned a meeting yet.
You should adjourn the meeting, I think it should make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Are we gonna go over minutes?
Yeah, same. We have. It was on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, well, some of these we've punted for a while, did anyone? Okay, so I guess we have a couple options, we can finish up minutes at our next meeting or have a special meeting to do it. I know you said you had a conflict on the fifth. If we're just doing minutes, I don't really care when we do it.
Yeah, but I don't want to change everyone's schedule because of me, so I can either see if someone can sit in or figure it out.
Well, okay, are we?
But so far, there is no one on the agenda for. I think it's on, is it the third? Yeah, so far, there's no applicants on the agenda, so you could just review.
We could just review minutes.
Yeah, I would prefer, I, I think we should, you know, give the proper attention to them.
Yeah.
The, the meeting, you know, is scheduled, so I think we should.
What about the copper leaf one? Is there a, does they have an urgency to getting their final written decision in order?
I haven't heard anything from them.
Because I know they need to submit stuff to the liquor authority and other stuff like that.
Oh, I'm, I'm on it.
So are you saying before the fifth, before the?
No, I'm just saying, we could, we could just authorize the resolution for copper leaf if we wanted to right now. But, because we only added two sentences to it, but if you haven't had time to review it.
But their start date is June 2nd, correct?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't see anybody sitting outside anytime soon.
I believe that their start date for outdoor seating is June 2nd.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess we need to make sure the correct dates are in the resolution anyway.
That's always a good idea.
I don't think I checked that. All right, so anyway, you're talking dates for a meeting.
So we're keeping. Or not, just next Wednesday?
So.
Review the meetings in the resolution, the minutes in the resolution at May, on May 3rd. That.
When was our last meeting?
April 5th.
April 5th. Okay. So Mindy, do you think we should try to get our resolutions written up before the 3rd, or do you think the 3rd is acceptable?
Actually, I kind of have a conflict on May 3rd.
You have a conflict?
Yeah.
How about, how about on Tuesday then?
We're still on the record.
Yeah, we're talking about scheduling a meeting.
How about, how about the day before, on that, on Tuesday?
On Tuesday.
And then maybe.
Maybe another board is meeting here on Tuesday.
Let me check.
No one meets on a Tuesday.
Sometimes they have special meetings.
True.
There's nothing on May 2nd.
Okay.
Are you available on May 2nd?
That works better for me, too.
Okay.
Can you make it, Justin?
Yeah.
Yeah, that works, we're talking about 6:30.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is for stuff you can't, you weren't involved with anyway.
Right, true.
It's possible that these resolutions are also ready for the second.
Yes, I think we should get all this stuff ready for the second.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
And.
Is that possible for you?
I think so.
Is Megan the one who's drafting them?
Based upon. So I have not drafted one as of yet, because I don't even know where these forms actually originally came from. So I don't know if Kristin previously had them, or is it something she got from you? Because I will have to check.
That was in the.
All of the codes to make sure that everything lines up correctly. I mean, I can do it, but I just need to make.
Well, so if you take a look at the resolutions that we had forwarded around via email, we had the draft ones that are fill in the blank. So I have some.
And all the codes are correct on everyone?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go over that.
We addressed that, yeah.
Okay.
So all, all, what I would suggest you do is, if you could, you had my handwritten notes, I think it could, wouldn't take very long to just type that up, just fill in the handwritten notes in there, email it to me, so I can review my own chicken scratch a little better. I'll update a few things, and then we'll go around to the whole board. So you and I can work on getting the initial draft together, does that sound fine to everybody?
Yes, thank you.
And then we'll go around to the board, and then we'll, the board will do what we want to do with it.
Thanks, Justin.
That's usually how it works. Okay, I don't know if we need to, we're not carrying a public hearing over, so I don't think we need a motion to set the meeting date, do we?
Wouldn't hurt.
All right, well, I guess we can, we can make a motion to change our meeting from May 3rd to May 2nd at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Do you vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. And so it'll have to be noted, oh, we don't have anything that's public, so we don't need to know anything.
No, nothing needs to be noticed. Just a meeting. All right. Okay, so we can adjourn? If there's anything else?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you.
Is it appropriate for us to ask the trustees what their concern was? I, I would have been.